Okay, I guess we'll get underway. Welcome everybody to our town council meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We will go ahead and everybody's had a chance to review the agenda. And if you're comfortable over there in here, can I get a motion to move forward on the agenda? Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved that the council of Towne Niqwa approved a regular meeting agenda for...
November sixteenth.
November sixteenth, yes. Yes, it's not in there, sorry. Okay, should have been able to figure that out myself. All in favor? Okay, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. If everybody's comfortable with the minutes, there's no errors or omissions. Can I get someone to move forward with a motion on that? Moved by Councilor Parrott, seconded by Councilor Dudo. Be resolved that the council of Towne Niqwa approved events of the regular meeting and the annual organizational meeting held November second, two thousand and twenty-one, is circulated. All in favor? Parrott. Okay, I think, can we, we can probably just move forward. I think we're just going to move forward into our public hearing. So I need to start off by calling matter of order. So can I get someone to move forward with that resolution? Moved by Councilor George, seconded by Councilor Pudlo. Be resolved that the council of Towne Niqwa do now open this public hearing to hear representation to amend the Towne Niqwa zoning bylaw three one eight four dash one eight. All in favor? Parrott. Okay, Jeff, I think you're up.
Sure. So this, this is bylaw three two zero seven dash twenty-one. And the general intent of this bylaw as a map amendment is for the Towne Niqwa zoning map being attached to and being part of the Towne Niqwa zoning bylaw number three one eight four dash eighteen as amended is hereby further amended in order that lands described as follows. Blocks one and two, plan six zero eight one, Niqwa land titles office located in the part southeast thirty-two, fourteen, fifteen in the Towne Niqwa, as shown outlined in the heavy solid line on a map attached here to and marked as Schedule A and made part of the amending bylaw number three two zero seven dash twenty-one is to be rezoned from its current M L industrial light zone to the R M H residential mobile modular home zone. And this, this amendment is, will allow for future residential development of the, of these lands.
Okay. I think we have a representative of the applicant here. Warren Mills, right?
Yes.
So if, Darrell Warren, did you want to come up and speak? Did you want to speak from there? Or can you give me his seat?
I, I gave the council a copy of the proposal as well. It's just very good to review, so.
Well, thank you for welcoming me to your community on a nice evening. Darrell and Senator, the developers are very upbeat and positive with regards to your community and the opportunity that this presents. I am their project manager. I will be probably the face of the project over the next few years. I'm a graduate of the University of Manitoba Faculty of Architecture and I hold a master's in project management from Shulock Business School at York University. I've done this before. We pride ourselves in, in working on a collaborative, non-confrontational, problem-solving approach to issues. And we look forward to having really good lines of communication so that none of us are surprised or disappointed. We, we look forward to getting into the project. And we understand that tonight is an important hurdle in that, in that path. So we, we, we look forward to your positive support of our intentions. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to speak to them either now or out, remain afterwards if anybody would like to, to talk in general terms.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments right now? This diagram that we're looking at, is that what we're going to be seeing?
Yes, in phases. It's approximately one hundred and forty sites. I don't think any, in our wildest dreams would there be that absorption, that demand. But we believe there will be over a short few years. The marketing has commenced. And to answer your question directly, that is what we will see when we are finished. We want to sit down with your, with your department and discuss a phased approach. Don't want to tear the whole place up. Want to, want to build and fill, build and fill, build and fill. I think our planners report has suggested possibly four phases. Those haven't been delineated yet. But to answer your question directly, what you see is what you will get.
So do you see everything going well, that you would be starting in two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes, our plan is to have, old expression, shovels in the ground in, in late, late spring, early summer of two thousand and twenty-two.
And that would be phase one, I guess, that we're suggesting, yeah?
Yes. We, we have a lot of work to do with your administration to, to design that phase. But it, the proposal seems to be moving at a healthy pace and we hope we can maintain that momentum.
Have you done the drainage plan yet?
No, we have not. It's an expensive, it's a cost. And we, we would prefer, we expected the provincial requirement of the drainage plan, but we, we made the business decision to wait until we were confident that we had a project. But there will be a drainage plan fired up just as soon as we know that we're supposed to be there.
Okay.
It's a beautiful site and we look forward to getting our teeth into it and we think it will be successful.
You say four-phase project. Where does phase one start us?
Do you mind if I take my mask off?
Yeah, I'll be okay.
Thank you. We're not sure. If you're looking at it, the upper left corner is a, is a piece of it that would, from a construction perspective, would phase nicely. But we're not sure how services will flow. To build a long line of services to get to the end of the road is, is, is not the best path.
Right.
So we have some work to do, as I said, with your administration. But ideally, that upper left corner with the center park was where we'd like to get started. That's our preconception.
Crossing the creek with sewer and water? How would you propose getting the sewer line in there?
We haven't done any, any servicing design whatsoever. It's a question that I've asked as well. But we'll get an answer shortly.
Yeah, but that's, that would be your engineer's problem, not yours.
It always ends up on you. But thank you for all. It, it is an engineering constraint and whether, how it's done will be interesting. I'm looking forward to the solution we get from engineering for that.
Okay, anybody else?
So just from my clarity, just from us as a community, this would fall solely under our overall home fees that we have in place within our existing trailer parks, correct?
We're currently looking at how we would possibly amend it as an upper bylaw as well and probably need something.
Well, one, one point I wanted to emphasize, and it, it's a changing world, but the trailer park historically were the sixteen by sixty-four single wides that Boz built at Porter and Prairie and that sort of product. If you, very shortly, our webpage for this site will be up including available designs and alternatives. We're not looking at sixteen-wide trailers. We're looking at twenty-four wide, two-seven-seven or two-forty modular built homes. The world's kind of a long way from, from the trailer park.
If I'm correct, isn't, isn't it on the Crescent Creek website, this proposal? And then some sample home or something?
Yes, on the Crescent Creek website. I saw a Delta version of it today. I don't know if it's up today. I think they were correcting typos on it, but I know Darrell will get you, get you the link as soon as we have, we know it's up and running.
Exactly. That's something at development plan, there was something I remember reviewing there.
Yeah, and I think you'll like it. We're, we're, we've, we've, we hope that the site will fill with more than one source of homes. Conquest Manufacturing of Altona, Manitoba are very proud, made in Manitoba Solutions. And I'd encourage anyone to go to their webpage. You'll see their product. They're our primary source. Triple M in Lethbridge through modular building in Headingly are our second source. They have some quality product that, that we like. We're also talking to Grand Year in Winkler. And we're talking to Shelter, who we've been doing some work with, a two-on subdivision that's moving in parallel to this.
Thank you. If you convince one of them to operate, like we have industrial land to the east of town, it would probably bode better for them if they were building on-site here and smaller group. Like, I get they need to have a location just to build so they could maximize their, their labor. That would be a good plus.
It, it certainly would, and it would be ideal. The, the problem with, and I don't want to work with manufactured and modular housing. It's a skinny business. They use every scrap and every piece and the labor, you know, in, in parallel. It takes so long to get a, a modular building plant up to a productive speed. You have, you have six look stations, twenty-four employees, someone doesn't make it and the entire bicycle chain is broken. So it's, it's, it's a slowly developed industry that I don't know that we have the time to get to. But there will be an awful lot of onsite construction with foundations, sewer and water, roads, secondary buildings. Any, any garages or secondary structures will be purchased and built locally. Our, our primary supplier right now works exclusively with, I believe, Doffen Co-op, their building material supply. So we're, we're, we're not in the community yet, but I think, I think you'll feel us when we, when we are here.
Deputy Mayor Headley, did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I just wondered, I think he explained it, like, I just saw there was three different versions here, but if you're dealing with five or six different companies, then there's going to be multiple.
That site's going to expand. We gave you a sample of some ideas. Ultimately, the consumer, you know, what people want will be what we will build. We're not, we're not fond of telling people, this is it. It will be, this is what's available.
So when you say modular, is there, are we going to have the same constraints here as far as minimum sizes once we're removing these structures in like you've had with minimum?
Thousands of them.
Okay, that's okay.
We've reviewed your existing bylaws, your, your planner shared them with us and we have no concerns.
Okay, great. Great, anybody else?
Anything else I can answer about?
I'll just touch on a bit of the circulation process. So the bylaw was circulated, it was in a local newspaper on two, two occasions. As it's affecting specific property, it was also sent to property owners within a hundred meters of, of that property. Of those, there's been no, there's been no public engagement locally. It also has been circulated through provincial departments, through the zoning process. Of the provincial departments, there's been two noted of no objections, but they do have a few requirements, and that's from Manitoba Infrastructure and Westman Cable. And Manitoba Infrastructure, they're looking for, as a condition of approval, written confirmation is required from our department that drainage is not an issue or that the applicant has adequately addressed a drainage issue. The applicant will have to provide our regional technical service engineer, Brandon, with the information necessary to ensure drainage from this site would not adversely affect the provincial highway system. If necessary, the regional engineer may request the applicant to submit a detailed drainage plan prepared by qualified experts. The costs and study of provisions of the highway drainage system are directly associated with proposed development and will be responsibility to developer. They gave a contact information for that. And also, Westman Communications was the other one, and they, they are interested in this proposed development and may require easements and joint construction. I would also just like to note a couple, there was some alternate comments which should be addressed, which, which, these comments came up through provincial circulation, through our, through the planning board, development amendment. And very, very similar, but they, they were just, they were a little more elaborate on what they, on what they were requesting, and this was also from Manitoba Infrastructure. And there was, we have concerns that traffic generated by this development may have an impact on traffic operations for both PTH five and sixteen. Therefore, we require the developer to provide some preliminary traffic projections. They gave contact information for that. Based on this information, our department will determine if a more detailed traffic impact study is required. If required, the study is to be prepared by a qualified engineer and will determine what impact the traffic generated by this development will have on traffic operations at this location and what, if any, on highway improvements will be required. And then also the written, this is the same one, it's the written confirmation required from a department for the drainage is not an issue or the applicant has addressed the drainage issue. So the number two was the same, but the previous recommendation was, was in the other one. I think that was the only notable ones. Yes, that was correct. So, so those were, those were comments that we received. They weren't necessary, anything that the planning district would act on, as it's more of this local law specific thing. So those would be up for the council's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Steve, is there any like that? Is there one?
There were no surprises in that.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If anyone else wants to review this public hearing, and if there's no more questions or anything, I...
Sure, please.
Okay, I think we are ready to close this public hearing. Okay, so the motion, moved by Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Councilor Pudlo. Be resolved that we now just adjourn this public hearing at seven twenty P M. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're going to go back into our regular meeting, and we are at council reports. Anybody have a council report tonight? Okay, Councilor Parrott.
We've had a big snow dump, and I've been in three, four communities during that time. And I must say that, I'm talking a little brand and easy, the side streets and residential streets were just snow-packed and not cleared. Another community, the streets were open and... Where I was working at Boise, everybody was, all the neighbors were helping everybody with their own driveways and their sidewalks and everything, really nice to see. And when I got back to Niqwa, I noticed all the streets were open. Great, we could drive and, you know, I saw other people helping. And I just think we've got one of the, I think, Councilor George called it, we have excellent streets.
It's pride for perfection, but we achieve excellence.
Yeah. And, and you know, we also developed an era where people do not get snow tires anymore. I do, but you know, I just want to let it be recognized that we do have some of the finer streets in Niqwa that are snow cleared.
Yes.
Despite driveways, which in the past, everybody just cleaned up, you know. Sometimes you do it twice because to open the road, next time it's wider. And there's my thought.
Good comments. Councilor Parrott, thank you. Councilor Gray.
Yes, White Moon Watershed, our district met actually today, November sixteenth, at nine A M. And we just reviewed the past year and the upcoming year within our watershed. There are going to be, go for further funding requests for watershed. Currently, we fund at a point two-five mil and that's going to stay the same at that level. We reviewed some of the projects. A great number of the projects are still occurring east of Niqwa with the Helston Drain Dead Lake areas like that. Talked a little bit about water storage. There are some phenomenal grow programs that are available for producers. If they do want to access and use of water storage and some, and a number of other projects. We do have a couple of smaller water retention projects west of us, which I like to see because that slows the water that comes to Niqwa and those flood events. But as a whole, everything's working smoothly within the White Moon Watershed.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Darrell. Anybody else? Any other council reports tonight? Okay, Manager of Operations, Dini, you're up.
Hopefully, light work, Councilor Parrott, kind of summarize quite a bit of it, but staff and machinery went out early Friday. It was a communication on the entire time, so just to complicate that, except for it's closed. Collection day, carts in the way, cars in the way. So just a lot of fun stuff to deal with. But staff and contractors persevered. When I was through town on Saturday, we just checked everything out. I found most of the roads passable. Some of them I just received an extra blow-in, so we made sure that we were going to do a secondary pretty in a lot of roads just to tidy them up prior to doing the full cleanup, which started to occur on Monday. Other than that, it's a, regardless of snow gates could not be utilized properly in a snowfall in this case. And you just have to understand that when the snow's that heavy, that wet in the beginning stages, even by the fact that we, we start with some ice rain and ice up the bottom layer, it's very difficult for machinery to dig down and try to cut that push and pull and throw out a gate in there and they just can't move the snow. It's just not doable. Next snowfall, the absolute worst likely utilized of the case, assuming, I guess nothing makes sense of six inches.
Right.
So all in all, it went very well, very pleased, good response. Staff cleaned up the most part of everything now. We'll tackle some of the back lanes starting tomorrow, tidy up some of those where we have some later parts to do that. And then again, we'll start, we have been doing sidewalks at the same time with my staff working on those. But overall, pleased, good response, really nice and highly open up again.
Okay, and you're happy with Davidson?
Yes, it's back to open. We'll just set it firm up, so the gravel road might get a little mucky with some of the moisture now because it frees up too soon and then spread a little, little dirty. But no, we've got the material in there, it can do a solid phase, which is great, and then we'll light up pavement for that in spring.
And Brown Avenue beside the Kinsmore Court?
That, I believe, has been opened up this afternoon, so that is passable. Thinking we'll tidy all that stuff up again in spring, see if we have to do those areas.
Yeah, I think the one comment that we heard, and you explained it tonight, was the snow gates, right? And I think, I think, I mean, I don't know if I even really understood it, so basically it just, so I understand that you're saying because the snow was so heavy to start with, right? Not only so much, but it was also so heavy.
When it's heavy, the volume's there, but it just do not operate well.
Right. So it's just impossible for that machine to run down the road and, and have the snow gate attached.
Yeah.
So it's just something you can't do, and it makes snowfall like this.
No, it's unfortunate. And apart from it's open and everything else, so we have our roads back and open and pass the stage.
Yeah, no, perfect. Okay, anybody else? Any comments? Okay, thank you, Dini. Okay, we're going to move on to finance. Everybody's had a chance to review the financial statement for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. If there's no questions or concerns, can I move forward with a resolution on that? Moved by Councilor Bill, seconded by Councilor George. Be resolved and reapproved the financial statement for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. All in favor? Parrott. Okay, we are moving into unfinished business, and Colleen, our update on the project at Park Lake.
So this is the report for basically November, so a month since our last update. Site one of Park Lake Dam, the detailed spillway design has been ongoing and spillway geometry has been refined since the preliminary design. It was originally had a primary forty-five meter wide spillway with an approximately one hundred meter wide secondary spillway to the west. They've now advised that, taking a better look at what should be worth the best out there. They'll actually have a forty-five meter wide spillway in the middle with two fifty-meter wide secondary spillways on either side of the main one now. So there will be leverage in their ways such that waters come over depending on the level that's coming in from the lakes. Change in geometry, geometry has affected the dam layout and the tree removal extent, so impacts to riprap and other associated effects for final design and construction are still being assessed. The final advanced geotechnical lab testing scheduled to be received by the end of November and geotechnical final design will finalize by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Tender packages for tree removal and rock fill and riprap and the access point are currently in draft stage. Tenders will be finalized when the spillway geometry impacts are finalized and the rock fill riprap sizing is confirmed. Tenders are planned to be issued before the end of November, so we were thinking originally in front of November, we'll move behind a couple of weeks now based on redesign and so on, but that's okay, we're still on course. Environmental request for review is to be submitted to Fisheries and Oceans Canada or D F O for construction of the temporary access within Park Lake, and it's a review stage, planned to be submitted by November nineteenth. And I think the prior meeting I know of two that it will be access point right by the reservoir, the construction of the new reservoir where it'll be easy to access the lake. Our site number three, which is the Park Lake Drive Bridge, the geotechnical report was finalized and issued on November ninth. An environmental request for review was submitted to D F O on November eighth for the construction of the new crossing. And structural design drawings are in the review series, but the tender package still planned to be released yet in the year two thousand and twenty-one. Looking at the sites of the golf course being the bridge and the riverbank erosion was basically hole number eight. The topographic survey has been completed during the last week of October. Geotechnical investigation is being coordinated and planned for December and design work will be completed early in two thousand and twenty-two. So as much as it does, it doesn't look like a lot is happening yet. Very necessary to get all the proven plates and designs and we'll start moving the product and the materials through the course of the winter and ready to actually see some action over there in the spring, so.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Any questions, any comments? Okay, will you move forward with a resolution on our R C M P municipal cost increases, Colleen?
So this is just a little follow-up, I think, I know they before, and I can't remember if we did it on public or not. We just had a letter, so it didn't come through resolution. Federation of Canadian Municipalities is excited to throw a support behind municipalities across Canada who are going to experience significant increase in retroactive pay increases through unionization of R C M P contracts. And then, of course, increases going forward. So our letter basically proposed that we're requesting the federal government to cover all retroactive pay increases back to two thousand and seventeen, because we clearly did not budget for those. And it will be a significant dollar value going forward. I think the four members on the slate, we can easily probably incorporate those increases, but to be, have to go back for years now and cover that difference, it is significant. So with the F T M putting their support behind municipalities, they actually want a resolution passed by council now to send in and help with all the effort. So it's basically, you know, we're now reading as we go through it and looking how it will have an impact on communities and whatnot, and we can send it off for the support of the federation.
Okay. Okay, everybody's comfortable with that, we'll move forward with resolution. Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Whereas, the recent collective agreement between the R C M P and the National Police Federation includes a significant retroactive pay going back to two thousand and seventeen as well as pay increases going forward. And whereas, our municipalities... forward, and whereas our municipalities and others that depend on RCMP contract leasing are facing significant unbudgeted costs that may force us to make very difficult choices at a time when our primary focus needs to be on economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas municipalities were not consulted at any stage of the negotiation process, despite the outcome of these negotiations having a direct and significant impact on municipal operations, and whereas RCMP cost increases will disproportionately impact rural communities, and whereas municipalities are eager to work more closely with other authorities of government and the RCMP on contract leasing issues to ensure the financial sustainability of contract leasing and to maintain the service levels necessary for community safety. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Nipewa joins the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in calling on the federal government to absorb all retroactive costs associated with implementation of the new RCMP labor relations regime, and be it further resolved that the federal government should comment, commit to ensuring municipalities are properly consulted prior to implementation of measures that impact local fiscal state sustainability and ability to maintain effective levels of police services in the Canadians. All in favor? Terry. Okay, we have another licensing software licensing agreement, Colleen.
So this is just manual resolution we passed. We actually approved the use of Manware software over here, and just so you know, the boom in the whole increase for the outcome, where they chose to become the situation in the industry in COVID that they're not increasing a fee. So I just need the ability to now sign these contracts so that we can continue to track everybody's utilities and taxes and all that fun stuff.
Okay, we'll move forward with another resolution, move by, council adult. Second by, council juror. Be it resolved that we authorize the CEO to sign the software support licensing agreements with the Manware for 2021. All in favor? Okay, and one on elm tree removal, Colleen?
Denis, you join?
Well, so we finally received our list of elm removals for the Nipewa community here. So I put quote requests out, received three, Middleton Enterprises, Gontree Street Service, and Free Gee, that's the last one.
Gee's Trees.
Gee's Trees. We've also authorized the local on this one, so I include the knockdown of all elm tree removal down to the minimum of 100 millimeter stump remaining, and on disposal at our tree delta site. So that's kind of a shortened version of Dutch elm removal.
We're recommending a move-in.
Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution, move by, council adult. Second by, council costume check. Be it resolved that we accept the tender of Middleton Enterprises in an amount of $8,000 plus GST for the removal of 17 elm trees identified for removal as part of the Dutch elm trees management program for 2021. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we are back to the resolutions of the zoning commitment bylaw. Do we have any further discussion on that?
I'll give you just a little quick summary of what's up. This is a resolution on your agenda tonight. The gentleman that appeared at the public hearing a little earlier in the evening in support of a roughly 48 progressive to be used to remove by modular homes, he has proceeded through the development plan amendment stage. Third reading has not been given to that bylaw yet, so after this, he will give second reading to the bylaw for the zoning amendment. That's all we're asking to do tonight. This will be your only chance, because he's not subdividing that property, to actually take a look at the Planning Act and specific section 150, which would allow you, because of the basically the sheer size of the particular parcel under question that's going to be developed, and the amount of housing that's going to go there, which is great. Point is, when you create that kind of housing, the impact on the services, the impact on the road, the impact on the drainage, the impact on basically everything in the community is a, is a lot greater than what you would see if it was just a single family residence, subdivided off, or even a few, or just a multifamily unit. So the only chance council has at this stage for the town of Nipewa to start negotiating how those services are going to be installed for water and sewer, how the roads are going to be designed, like I said, drainage, you know, Jack spoke about those things earlier, is right now before the passing of third reading of the zoning bylaw. So I have a resolution on here, basically not citing out all of the terms we will require the developer to meet. We will go through the list as in the Planning Act, the things that are contained in our zoning bylaw that might speak to buffers and whatnot, we will flesh those all out in a development agreement and have that all set to before we give third reading to the bylaw, because this is your own opportunity.
School?
School, there's another thing, requirements in the Planning Act say that you can set aside basically a certain portion of mountain public preserve and for schools, and in the absence of setting aside a specific amount of land, which is roughly no greater than 10%, you can have them set aside an amount equivalent in cash to the market value of what property exists. That, that isn't money if you decide to do that, that we will keep, it goes directly to the schools, should there be the necessity to add another school somewhere in the area or construct an add-on or addition of some sort. But we have to take those things into consideration, because as it was noted, if 140 does get achieved over there, that could have a great impact on school systems. As we go through that, you know, Jeff and I, and probably Denis and whoever else is available, will meet with the developers, and you will determine what's the best there in for Nipewa and what the requirements are going to be going forward. Having just since, more previously, over the last number of years, developed 48 parcel ourselves over here on the sea inland, there is a significant amount of time and effort and money that has to be invested in there, and we're going to make sure that, you know, as our policies have begun to state, the developers have to be responsible for, for a lot of the infrastructure, can't be bought by just general tax crews and communities.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. I think I understand all that. Any other questions, any comments? Okay, and we'll move forward with the zoning amendment bylaw. Move by, council parent. Second by, detective mayor edit. Whereas the Planning Act provides Manitowoc with the authority as a condition of making an amendment to the zoning bylaw to require the owner of the affected property to enter into a development agreement to deal with all applicable matters under section 150 of the Act. Therefore, be it resolved that as a condition of amending the zoning laws of one and two, Plan 6081, NLTO, the council for the town of Nipewa hereby requires Crescent Creek Estates to enter into a development agreement with the town of Nipewa to set forth in writing all obligations and matters for the development of the affected property per section 150 of the Act. All in favor? Terry. Okay, and then I think we're going to move forward with second reading. Colleen's explained how that's going to work, and we're going to hold up on the third, do we get some more stuff on the table? Anybody have any comments on that? Okay, we'll move forward with second reading then, move by, council costume check. Second by, council adult. Be it resolved that bylaw number 3207-21, being a bylaw of the town of Nipewa to amend the zoning of laws one and two, Plan 6081, for NL industrial light zone to RNH residential mobile modular home zone, be now read for a second time. All in favor? Terry. Okay. We're down to the business. Anybody have anything they want to discuss tonight? Okay, if not, we will move forward with the chairman. Move by, council adult. Second by, council costume check. Be it resolved that the council, the town of Nipewa, do not adjourn the regular meeting at council at, what is our time here? Seven, we'll say seven, 40 PM. All in favor?
Question three.